All right, for the record.
Before we leave, I'm gonna show you what I found today.
Mr. Moran's not here. Mr. Caldwell and Mr. Smith are all absent. So if they show up, we'll make a note of that. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the April invoices. Need a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the April invoices.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Shirley.
I second it.
Second by the banker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Next on the agenda is the approval of the April ninth, uh, April ninth minutes. Need a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Mizell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wyden. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Then we have the approval of the April sixteenth special meeting minutes. A motion to approve those, please.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Mizell.
I'll second, yeah.
Second by Mr. Shirley. All those in favor?
Uh.
Motion approved. We need to do the approval of the May agenda, which we have a couple changes.
Yeah, we have two additions. Oh, we have addition on the whole business, uh, third grade acres, unit sixty. And I, we abandoned agenda right after we sent it out, so some of you got it. We need to add that to the whole business to take final action on that plan. And then under other business, we need to add, under state, uh, closed session to discuss.
Everybody get those changes? Now a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Mizell.
I'll second, yeah.
Second by Mr. Shirley. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Items for postponement withdrawal, we have one, which is a Cox Smith zone change. We need a motion on that too, don't we Joe? It's on the agenda, we don't have to motion that.
Yeah, but you approved the agenda and it already shows that, so I think that's fine.
And the consent agenda, we have nothing. So, uh, for the record, Mr. Smith is in attendance now. First order of business be third grade acres, final action.
Okay, this is a preliminary subdivision plat for third grade acres, unit sixty. I'm gonna mess this up if I try and fix it. Sorry, delay in the clicker. This is the subdivision plat you, uh, you reviewed last month. You recommended approval on it and the motion died, uh, and then you didn't take further motion. Because we need to act on preliminary subdivision plats and development plans within ninety days of their submittal. We need to actually take action on this, um, otherwise it's just kinda hanging there. I would recommend you, um, if you still wish to deny, you make a recommendation for denial and kinda state some reasons for denial and then go ahead and take that action. That's all I had on it.
Does everybody remember this application?
Mm-hmm.
These are the townhomes and we were trying to protect the, uh, existing tree line behind, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a tree line, there's a drainage. Uh, we'll move forward, the next item on agenda is the Toyota, uh, engineering office building and, um, laboratory building. The request is for approval of preliminary development plan for a twenty-four thousand eight hundred and nine hundred, two hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-six square foot building, including an office, uh, one hundred and eighty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-eight square foot office, two-story office section, and then a laboratory building in the rear. It's going in on the Toyota, on the southern end of the Toyota property, south of the manufacturing plant, but north of Family Circle Drive, at approximately this location. There's, I think this is a staging area for contractors now. Um, this is outer ring road, this is the entrance to Family Circle. The project includes this L-shaped office building section and then the laboratory in the rear. It'll be accessed from outer ring road and from Family Circle Drive. And it's also tied to this larger interchange project as part of the interchange, uh, at exit one twenty-seven, this, that the state is constructing. They'll put in the inter, interchange up here, the two connector roads to Cherry Blossom Way and Champion Way. They'll also construct this access road and a new road, uh, to Cherry Blossom Way, uh, down here. Traffic circle and then a portion of the outer ring road they'll improve to, I think, about right here and right here. Toyota will construct, reconstruct the outer ring road, kinda relocate, uh, the ring road in this area, uh, and then construct this inner ring road that'll give access to the office building and the lab building. It includes these, this, these parking areas, but they're also gonna grade the area in rear for potential expansion in the future. They don't have a timeline on that, but they're gonna go ahead and do the grading. If and when they, they do that expansion, they'll have to come back through planning commission, uh, with those, uh, with the building drawings and elevations and amend this development plan for that future, um, construction. So the two access roads, uh, two park, two large, uh, employee parking areas and a guest parking area here, um, access and turnaround down the middle. They're also adding a pedestrian connection to Family Circle Drive and, um, one reason we're really excited about this project is they're, they're talking about making a, kind of a multi-use path connection, bike and pedestrian connection, all the way over to the interchange, um, access roads and the interchange project is including a multi-use path on the south side of, of the road that connects, um, sixty-two to Champion Way. So there'll be a multi-use path in that area and this potentially, this connection, uh, could, uh, if you count, uh, all that trail area, add almost three miles of trail. So, that's very exciting. They're also looking to do a lead project, so this is, um, leadership in energy and environmental design, it's kind of a, um, a green, a program that measures, uh, environmental, um, quality of design, uh, but it includes a lot, it includes kind of photovoltaic panels over, over the visitor parking areas, some, um, a lot of green features in their stormwater, uh, controls, their, a rain garden and a lot of bioswells and other features that'll make this, um, kind of a project we can point to as, um, you know, something we wanna aspire to in other areas of, of the city. This is a, kind of an elevation of the office portion, so it's gonna be very modern, uh, sleek, kind of, uh, beautiful building architecturally. Uh, this is the main entrance, uh, you can kinda see some of the, some of the bioswells but, and the interior landscaping. So the project itself is very innovative and we're excited about, you know, um, the building project itself. There are a few features, um, or a few aspects, uh, in relation to our development regulations, uh, where, um, we want to address, um, just to bring them to your attention, one, first one is they're, they need a variance to the interior landscape requirements. We require two, in, in I-two districts, we require, um, two trees for every two hundred fifty square feet of interior, uh, landscape area, um, and they're unable to get that in, in the proposed layout just because, mainly because of those, um, the bioswells and the green features that they're proposing and also these, um, these, uh, photovoltaic panels that don't allow really any landscaping in the visitor parking, but they're distribu- the, the landscaping that they can, uh, fit in the interior, um, islands, they are putting in, the rest they're distributing around the rest of the site. So they are, uh, including a pretty good buffer around the exterior of the building, uh, along the, the inner ring road that they're constructing and in a buffer between the inner ring and the outer ring road. So it'll be well landscaped as you approach and all the, all the roads, um, interior, on the interior will be, um, tree lined and landscaped. So although it doesn't meet our current interior landscape, uh, tree count, it, uh, they're asking for a variance of, of fifty, it's, it's very close to our requirement and they're distributing the, the remainder of the trees throughout the site, so, uh, it is heavily landscaped. And Rob, you asked about, uh, we are looking at amending now our landscape requirements to reduce that required tree count from two for two fifty to one to two fifty. So, we're looking at reducing that anyway, but we're adding a canopy requirement and in industrial zones, we're looking at adding a ten percent canopy, uh, required. This, um, provides about eighteen percent canopy coverage and, and growth. And I had to, um, estimate, 'cause we don't have a species-specific plan yet, but just taking an average of, of the permitted species, this is still well over our required, what our required canopy, um, count will be if we pass the ordinance change. Right now, we don't have a canopy count, so, uh, the landscaping, uh, is, uh, in my opinion, more, more than sufficient. It also, the project sits way back off the road, so it's not, uh, the building won't really be visible from Cherry Blossom Way, uh, so, um, that's not really an issue. And industrial zones, we don't require perimeter landscaping anyway, so this is really going above and beyond what our requirements are. I would say the one item we really wanted to address was the traffic issue, because there is, there's been an ongoing traffic concern, uh, with increased growth in this area, especially at Connector Road at shift change, uh, Toyota shift changes, uh, and at rush hours. We looked at, they submitted at the interchange justification study as their traffic study and it looks, that was provided to, to the Federal Transportation, um, Agency to, to get approval for the interchange, uh, which was also, um, um, approved to take into account all the, um, additional employees at Toyota at the new manufacturing plant as well as this office complex and all the additional, um, growth that was anticipated in this general area of town, including the TIF project and all the residential growth. And what the, what the study shows is that this project and the additional connection to I-75 into Cherry Blossom Way and Champion Way reduces the traffic at Connector Road by about thirty percent, uh, at peak hour. It's still, when you take into account, uh, future growth through, uh, year twenty forty, there'll still be congestion issues anticipated at, at Connector Road, at that interchange, uh, but this reduces that significantly and that, the interchange study really looked at, at the whole, the big picture of full buildout of this area. So, um, as other growth appear, occurs in the future, the TIF project, uh, future residential growth, I think other, um, other, um, projects will have to be planned and, um, paid for and constructed in the area, including, uh, probably an extension of, of this interchange road, um, that hits, um, Champion Way, that'll probably have to be connected through to four sixty at some point in the future to relieve some of the regional traffic, but there are other projects that will probably have to occur, but they're not really tied to, to this office complex project, they're really tied to more long-term growth in the area, especially, um, the TIF project, I would say, is the big generator. And we're working with, uh, the Lexington area MPO and they have communicated to us that they're willing to work on modeling and, um, future studies of, of regional transportation needs, you know, uh, as development occurs, we're gonna have to, especially in the comp plan update, we're gonna have to get into what projects really need to occur and what are the priorities and kind of start funding those or putting them in some, some type of capital improvements plan. But as far as this project goes, uh, the interchange, uh, when it's constructed, will more than, um, make up for the Toyota growth that's occurring now. So we are recommending approval of the project with nine, with the, with the requested variance to reduce the interior vehicle use area trees to three hundred and twenty-four from three seventy-four and with the nine conditions of approval, which are, uh, really just our standard conditions, uh, any revisions come back through planning commission, uh, species-specific landscape plan be included with final development plan, all applicable requirements of the Georgetown Fire, GMWSS, Kentucky American Water, um, our subdivision development regulations, uh, we'll need to see a digital copy of the final development plan, uh, they'll meet all, have to meet all our stormwater requirements and, um, prior to construction, they will need to meet with us, they'll have, need to have a final development plan signed off and meet with us in a pre-construction meeting before, uh, construction begins.
Everyone having questions for staff?
Joe, the only question I had was kind of in regards to the, uh, pedestrian and bike trailer you were talking about. The, uh, the road, is it, approaches the interchange, if there would be any point along that, that area, would, would there be a, a place for a tunnel or something to where the, uh, people walking or bicycling could cross from one side of the street to the other without having to go across traffic?
A tunnel, where?
I've been looking for places like that. I've, I've been looking for opportunities like that in, in other areas around town, still people can safely travel on a bike, walking without having to cross Cherry Blossom. I don't know if there's an opportunity to put, put anything like that in. Has roads being built or?
Hmm, I don't, I'm not sure where you're referring to, but...
As, as you approach the, the interstate?
As you approach the...
Between Toyota and the interstate, I don't know if there's any place there that you could cross without, without having to cross?
Across.
Four lanes traffic.
There is gonna be an intersection, uh, to cross at the, at the road extension from, from the interchange to Champion Way. So there'll be an inter, there'll be an intersection to cross there. Are you talking about to get across the interstate or just to get across?
No, as far as crossing the interstate, I'm just saying as far as crossing four lanes of traffic, if you need to switch sides. The trail, I think, comes out on the, uh, that'd be on the north side of that interchange way. And if you wanted to get...
Yeah.
I'm just looking at places that you could potentially examine this thing down the road.
Yeah, it's hard to talk about with...
Probably on that aside quite a bit, do you know of any place that might accommodate me to talk about?
Off topic, there are some, certain, certain bridges as you get close to I-75, because the, that's the intersection has to go up high. Also the access to the rest area, I think it's going underneath, so on, on, this on the Toyota side, the bridge probably is further back. So of course that's, that'd be, um, I-75 right, I'm not sure how, how it's accomplished, but physically there, there'd be a place you could go underneath and access.
I'm just looking at if we, if we could potentially get a, a bike route started or a walking, walking path started, you didn't have to cross traffic, depending on a light in order to be able to cross, you could pretty much be on your own path, it would be, just looking at some of the places around Lowell, Legacy Trail in Lexington, right here, until you get right in the middle downtown, you have to cross the traffic very often.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it'd work in this situation.
If there was a, if there was an opportunity, it'd be good to point it out, just to...
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
No, I'd just like to make a comment, Joe. I'm like you, I'm very excited to, to see this lead-type project and hopefully Toyota's good a neighbor as they are, might let us use some of those ideas for our future, save us engineering costs and discovery cost and, yeah, I think it's gonna be a great model for the community to, to mirror in some of our more difficult situations that we've had.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, it's gonna have a lot of features that we can point to and say, look, this is how you can do it.
Charlie, if you wanna swear an aptance?
Yes, there's five people signed in, if you all could stand, raise your right hand, Do you swear affirm any statements you're about to make to be the truth, the best for information, belief? Thank you all. They all seem to be project-connected, so in whatever order...
Whichever one of y'all wanna speak, go right ahead.
Kim Minkie with Toyota. Just thank you all very much for, um, your consideration for this, this project and be glad to answer any, any other questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions for the aptance?
Great project.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
That being said, we'll need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Does your motion also?
The variance.
Including all the variants that stated.
The one variance plus the nine conditions of approval?
Correct, thank you.
That's a motion by Mr. Sulsky.
My second motion?
Second by Ms. Mizell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those in... Motion approved. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Did I get your signature?
Ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Let's get that door closed.
Close that door, please, thank you.
All right, this is a continuation of a public hearing, do we have to announce that?
Just, the chair will just note on the record that this is a continuation of the public hea-, well, landscape?
Yeah, landscape.
For the record, it's a continuation of our, uh, landscape ordinance amendment, it's a public hearing, so the public hearing is now.
Okay. We were looking at, um, really three changes, I'll try to summarize. One is to reduce that interior vehicle use area tree, tree requirement from two, from two to two, two trees per two hundred and fifty square feet to one tree per two fifty. And as part of that, we were, we thought it would be better to add some canopy requirements so that we don't get, you know, we can kinda protect against clear cutting, you know, we can protect kind of our, um, tree canopy existing as development occurs and then we can, we can allow flexibility that way. So, you require less, fewer trees on the interior islands, but as long as you maintain an overall canopy requirement. And as part of that, we were suggesting a table, we put in a table that incentivizes keeping existing trees. So your canopy requirement would be lower if you maintained existing canopy, um, but it would be a little bit higher if you clear cut, you know, if you cleared the site, then you have to plant back more. So the changes would affect new development and, um, amended redevelopment, amended development plan. So if, if a project was going to, you know, um, clear a site, demolish a building and build back new, kinda like Chick-fil-A did, they would be, they, they would fall under this too. So basically, any new development plan that would come before planning commission. We already, we talked about this, but our landscape ordinance already exempts ag zoned property, any residential or agricultural uses on ag zoned land, so that's already exempt. So we maintain that. So this wouldn't affect anything really out in the county. We already have cluster landscape requirements, if you're doing a cluster development, but other than that, any type of residential use, um, cluster or five acre wouldn't be additionally affected by any of these canopy standards, so they'd be exempt. I went through the changes proposed. I think that just restates it, we'd require a tree protection plan kind of upfront. Now we require one anyway, but if they don't, sometimes we don't get it until corrections and then it's sometimes too late. Other, you know, we'd have to delay a month, the project, in order to really be able to fully evaluate it, but, so we're asking for it upfront, um, or enforcing the requirement that'd be provided upfront. This is the table. Ag is exempt, so, commercial, multifamily, single family and industrial, if you're preserving the canopy that's there, uh, this is, this is the, the requirement. So industrial, um, industrial lot, say in Lampton Business Park, five percent canopy coverage, or Georgetown Industrial Park is probably a better example, five town, five percent, if you save five percent, if there's existing trees on site that you're able to save, that's what you need to provide. If you completely clear the site, you have to provide ten percent. So that's, that's kinda what this table shows. Single family, ten percent, if you can save ten percent, uh, that's all you provide. If not, you provide fifteen, if you can save certain proportion, this goes down. If you can save certain proportion, this goes down, so it, it varies from 10 to 15. Multifamily, same thing, 15 to 20 and commercials, 20 to 24. Matt did some calculating based on existing species and this is, this is what four average trees of this species, how much area they'd cover. So four sugar maples canopy would cover almost a quarter acre. So that's just kind of for, and this is, uh, a slide that just shows some of the benefits of a tree canopy. Cuts down on, um, improves the environment in a lot of ways. I mean, cuts down, um, wind erosion, uh, creates a healthy environment by creating more shade and, uh, reducing the heat island effect, the temperature, um, over paved areas and crew, provides habitat and, uh, these other benefits. A5, we just threw this in there to say there are, are already requirements for clusters, landscape requirements for clusters. So this, that, those would still be there, but this wouldn't apply. These, these canopy requirements wouldn't apply. So looking at existing sites, Matt had done some calculations of existing sites out there and we kind of went through this last time, but I'll go through it again. This, these are our existing requirements, so the two, two to 250 and no canopy. So under our existing requirements at Zaxby's, um, they have a 35% canopy coverage and they had to provide 20 interior trees and nine perimeter trees. Uh, if the changes went into effect, they would only have to provide 10 interior trees and then only nine more to meet the canopy or to exceed the canopy requirement. So, and actually, the perimeter stays in place, so they would, they would be, this is all they'd be required with interior and perimeter and then, so they'd be, they'd already be way over, so they, they would have 10 less trees they'd have to plant. They'd be over the canopy requirement. Kroger, um, got a variance, these are the variance numbers, so without a variance, these are the numbers. They were already over, um, with our old standards, two per 250. If they provided that, they would have had 222 trees. The new standard, they would only have been required 111. But they were, only needed 91 perimeter, so they would have had to put those 91 in plus an additional 100. But they could have gone anywhere, just needed to meet the canopy. They wouldn't have had to go in the interior, they wouldn't have had to go on the perimeter of the parking lot. They could have gone in the back in that, you know, that tree lined area that they saved, um, in the back, that, those could have counted and I think that's what a lot of those were. So in order to meet the 24, so they would have had more flexibility, they would have had to do less trees. Kroger, because of their requirements for, you know, grade and everything in their parking lot, they probably would ask for a variance anyway, even with our new, our new standards. They would have been required 308. They asked for a variance to 234, so they probably would have, that would have been a situation where they probably would have still asked for a variance because the building, size of the building, the size of the parking lot, really, there's no area for. So, I mean, that might not be a good example, but, you know, big box stores, um, might be tight unless, you know, at, at the, at the edges of the site, if they can maintain the existing tree stands, that'll go a long way, but make it, still get a variance request. I don't, I don't, I don't know for sure. Okay, Windermere Apartments, it's actually multifamily. It's owned, it's owned B2 for some reason. They got a conditional use permit, but, um, we don't need to talk about that because I don't know how that happened, but anyway. I think, I think conditional uses were allowed to be two when it went in, but they have a 20% requirement if they clear cut. So this is, this is, that 20% is based on there being no trees on site and I know there are a lot of trees along the perimeter, but under existing, this is what, um, they were required, um, they only had 10% canopy coverage. Our new standard had the interior trees. They're required 73, um, total additional trees to meet the canopy requirement. Um, Harmony Village, 20% again for multifamily and that's, if they saved, if there were some tree stands they could save, um, it would be 15, but 20% is the max that you would ever be required. Again, same thing, half the interior, but, um, additional, uh, perimeter and other trees for one, one additional tree, um, to get to 20%. So in those two cases, um, our new standard won't reduce, um, the number of trees they would have had to plant, uh, in those two cases if they clear cut. If that makes sense. I think in most commercial, in industrial situations, um, you'll be able to meet the canopy standards with, with existing trees that are on the site. Here's the international crankshaft in Georgetown Industrial Park. There are only really required perimeter industrial park along, uh, existing roads. They provided, um, 54 interior, five perimeter. Our changes would require half the interior and then, um, additional perimeter or in other areas, um, for one more additional tree required. And that, that could vary somewhat depending on the road frontage of the site. Okay. I think you all probably get in the picture, but, um, Rocky Creek, I think Matt probably threw this slide in here late. I'm not sure exactly what he was trying to show here, but, um, I think he's just showing that, um, that they could meet the standard with 39 trees on site, on a 30 acre site, 39 trees would meet the standard. So, and these are the trees that he calculated in there. So in a residential situation, if you have a 30, 30 acre site, um, you want to develop a subdivision on that roughly, take roughly 39 trees to preserve, to meet that canopy standard, 39 existing trees. And this is an example of how, uh, on the development plan submittal, how you can easily calculate the amount of canopy you're saving. If this is a tree protection area, um, this is Falls Creek, um, you can just basically outline, calculate the area. So this is 1.45 acres or 15% of, of the, this development here. So it's very easily, easy to calculate area, uh, using aerial photo, um, in identifying the tree, existing tree areas. Um, again, same thing, this is the thoroughbred 16 that we just looked at, outlined it, that's 48% of the development, so 1.83 acres. So it's very easy to do the canopy calculations. So, um, we, if we reduced our standard, that wouldn't require anything for the developer to do, it's just, you know, our review would be different, but one thing they would have to provide is a landscape plan, uh, preliminary landscape plan, which they already provide, but the only additional thing is the canopy area would need to be calculated and outlined on their tree protection plan or their preliminary landscape plans. They just have to identify the canopy area that they want accounted towards the standard, show it on their plan, calculate it, so we can verify it. So that's really the only additional change that would happen if this landscape ordinance change were approved. And that's, that's it for the presentation. I don't know if you all had further questions or further research you wanted us to, uh, to undertake or evaluate any specific site. I think the intent is to provide more flexibility on site to reduce the requirement on, of planting in interior islands where it doesn't make sense, where we've seen over time, it doesn't make sense to crowd trees into these islands. So to kind of back off on that, allow trees the room they need to grow to maturity on the interior islands, but then set some canopy standard where we can try to protect existing urban canopy. And this is really just trying to protect areas, uh, new residential areas, new commercial areas in town so that we can, you know, maintain the canopy in town and all the benefits it provides, but in a way that's flexi- flexible. So with that said, we tried to be, um, realistic and we tried to create a table that, um, wasn't too burdensome, um, a canopy standard that I don't think is too burdensome and encourages protection of existing trees.
Good job, Matt.
Thank you.
Oh, and Joe.
Joe, one, one thing I've mentioned, uh, it's probably not going to be an issue everywhere, but there may be places where you have an entire grove of ash trees. They may be healthy right now, more than likely they're going to be dead in the next 10 or 15 years just because of ash borer. Be a lot of trees down in the next few years. I don't know, in those cases, it's probably a good idea to recommend to, to the owner to cut some of those trees and plant, plant something different in there that have, have an opportunity to start growing before those things are gone. If you had, you know, a large, large area of ash trees that don't die at once, you suddenly went from having lots of shade to nothing at all. And on top of that, you know, I, I deal with it all the time now on the farm, trees dying, falling on fences and, uh, I can look around and see a lot, pull out work ahead too.
Yeah. Well, we have a list of, um, species that are not permitted to be planted. I mean, we might need to investigate some of those issues. I mean, if there are ash trees that we, you know, there is an ash borer moving into this area that's, you know, there's no antidote for.
Not yet.
I think that's something that can be addressed in the, you know, in the manual itself.
Well, ash trees have been a bad industry for the past 200 years. Whatever this, this borer that's found its way here, there's no, no stopping from killing what's here. They said that, that I think the only thing they're working on right now is a breeding program to cross, uh, American ash with, uh, Japanese ash or something. They think that those will survive. Your American ash seems to be doomed.
Well, we do have a landscape manual that, you know, lists the trees that are permitted and those that are, you know, invasive and can't plant. That needs to be, I mean, that is updated periodically. We don't have an arborist, but, um, we kind of piggyback on Lexington's landscape manual and they update it every couple of years and they take those things into account. Not, I'd have to look at it, I don't know what it says about ash in the current manual. It was updated 2012 maybe.
The elm trees in my place are worse than the ash right now. A lot of the, the elms are dying, so it's got its own disease.
Yeah.
Any more questions? Questions from the public? Nope. Uh, I guess this will close the public hearing on the landscape ordinance amendment.
Now, if you wanted to go ahead and vote on it to, tonight, uh, you could vote on whether to, you'll have to make a recommendation on, on this proposed change and then we'll have to take it through city council and fiscal court and stamp the ground in Sadieville before we can incorporate it into, um, our landscape requirements. So we'll need a recommendation, say a positive recommendation from the board before we move forward. So either that vote occurs tonight or at a later date if you want us to look into it more.
You comfortable voting on it tonight?
I am.
I think staff has done everything we've asked them to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Changed what we asked them to change and I think it's time to move forward with it.
Yep.
So if we're in agreement with that, we're going to need a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move that we, uh, we approve this landscape ordinance, proposed changes and forward it to the fiscal court, uh, so it could be incorporated with other...
Yeah, I'd probably take it to city of Georgetown first because it's really not going to affect the county.
Sadieville's there.
Except maybe in a rare instance of B2 property or something out in the county. So probably take it through city council first and, and then to fiscal court.
So we have a motion by Mr. Smith that we need a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Moran.
Since this is an ordinance, it'd be a roll call.
Roll call. Uh, a yes vote is for the landscape ordinance amendment, so. Uh, Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
Mr. Solsky?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Ms. Holland?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mizell?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Okay. I guess the next thing on the agenda is closed session or discussion of pending litigation, so.
We have to make a motion on that, Charlie?
Yes, sir. We have a motion to go into a closed session to discuss pending litigation.
Motion to discuss pending lit, uh, closed session.
Is there anything?
There's nothing on that. There's nothing on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moving to go into closed session, discuss pending litigation.
Mr. Mo, a motion by Mr. Smith.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Shirley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Motion approved.
Save.